Ubassutter.live's local government livestreams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske Truck Rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com.
Awesome. Sir?
You guys raise your right hand. Tess, Tess, Tess. Aye, state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Congratulations. Did you want to call your family members up here? Whoever's going to do the pinning? So really quick, to start off, Clayton and Matthew both came to us, highly recommended. They're both lateral officers. Clayton's from Wheatland and Matthew's from SAC PD. And they've just been great, and I think we're fortunate to have these guys. Nelson, he's been acting lieutenant for a couple, three months, and you've done a great job, and I couldn't be happier, and I'm glad it's you. Thank you. Thank you all.
Tess. Didn't have to run away. Anyway, congratulations to y'all. I know this is, I hope this is meaningful to you all as it is to me. We haven't met. I'm Chris. Clayton, good to meet you. I'm so happy for y'all, and I know every member of the council joins me, and congratulations, best wishes, and we're so happy to have you on board.
Really, that's all. We just, we thank you. We're glad to have you, and thank you very much.
I love those ceremonies. Okay, we are going to pivot now. Someone is here from Habitat for Humanity, Habitat for Humanity. There you are. Now, if a bunch of you are thinking about exiting, why don't you do it now? You don't have to leave. God bless y'all.
It's a funny project. Chris, there. I was so excited.
No, it has, it's no reflection. It's just more comfortable if they...
Those are the volunteers?
Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, Nelson? Get the door closed. That's, that's so grand. Welcome.
Thank you.
You bet.
Testing. All right, well, Mayor, council members, thank you so much for having us here tonight. I am, my name is Camille Benner, and I am the Director of Family Services at Habitat for Humanity, Ubassutter, and I am here to talk about a really exciting project, the Jimmy and Rosalind Carter Rural Rally Workshop. But before I get started in the presentation, I do want to thank city leadership for meeting with our team last week so we could get agendized at the very last minute, and extra thanks to City Clerk Nadine for your grace in those last-minute changes to tonight's agenda. I want to let you know that we are not here requesting funding. This is...
We're out of money anyway, sir.
No, hopefully this is going to save some funding, and it's a great community engagement. And so really, it's just to get it on your radar, we're going to start marketing to the community. We had a last-minute location change on this project. We've been working with Yuba County, so now we're bringing it into Marysville, and we want to let you know of the opportunity, the national spotlight on the Habitat stage, and how wonderful this event is going to be.
I missed your name when you introduced yourself.
Camille Benner.
Beg your pardon?
Kami Benner.
Kami.
Yes.
And you're new with Habitat here locally?
No, I've been here for almost six years.
Oh, you've been hiding. Okay.
I stay in my office. You know, all these, working on grants, I have our administrative officer, she's now the one doing that, and I'm doing family services. But no, I've been there a while.
Okay. Nice to meet you. Thank you.
Flying under the radar. All right, so I'm going to apologize in advance. I made a couple of slide changes, so if you see me hiccup, it happened. Okay, Nadine. Oh, there we go. All right, I got it now. All right, so before I tell you about the Rural Rally Workshop, I want to give you a little bit of background as to what it is and why it came here. You may be familiar with the Jimmy Carter Build, the Carter Workshop Project, and that has been going since 1994. This is the Super Bowl for a Habitat affiliate, right? It's our crowning jewel. Habitat International does specific invites. This is an invite only to Habitat affiliates that they find in the community that are meeting the mission, getting measurable outcomes, and have really strong partnerships with their local jurisdictions. This brings in thousands of volunteers from all over the world, willing to pay upwards of $5,000 each day to be on a build site just to be a part of such an incredible event. And that doesn't even bring into account all of the corporate sponsors in the multimillions. So in 2025, well, actually 2024, but we were invited to apply to be the Carter Build Project for 2025, which is an incredible honor as a Habitat affiliate. And we were going to utilize the Fernwood Meadows Project that we are in partnership with Yuba County, where the first phase will provide 22 homes of ownership, affordable home ownership within Yuba County. Unfortunately, we did not get selected for the 2025 cycle. It did go to Austin, Texas, but we do have the opportunity to apply for the 2027 cycle. And what happened at the international level is they saw all of these affiliates that really want to be a part of the Carter Work Project, and that is what brought to, this is a new initiative, is it's the very first annual Jimmy and Rosalind Carter Rural Rally Work Project. And so habitats across the nation are going to have access to Habitat marketing materials, Habitat media, and we are going to be working during the same week as the main event, the Carter Work Project in Austin, Texas, doing smaller events within our local communities. The big goal is also to really put a spotlight on the need for affordable housing in our rural communities that are often underserved and overlooked. So, like I said, we were going to be in Yuba County doing the Rural Rally Project, and a location change, and we are now going to be hosting it right here in the city of Marysville on Pine Street, which is incredibly exciting. We want this to be successful for a multitude of reasons. Obviously, I'm in nonprofit. My big thing is I wanted to serve the community. I want to put somebody into affordable homeownership, but also, we want to prove to Habitat International that we have political will, that we have strong leadership across all of our jurisdictions, and that we have the capacity to pull off such an incredible event, because this isn't big for Marysville or Yuba County. It's Ubassutter at large. We're talking lots of people coming to our community to just see us shine and meet our leadership, and we want to bring that here. So here we are, at 426 Pine Street in Marysville. This house looks better right now than it does in this picture, and we have basically completely gutted the inside of the house, which was a necessity, and anything inside needs to be redone. We're going to be using volunteer efforts to rehab this home and have it become homeownership for somebody just in time for the holidays. But we're not stopping at 426 Pine Street. We have decided that we are going to brush the entire street with kindness. We are going to be offering exterior paint, tree trimming, landscaping, debris cleanup, and really just an overall revitalization to Pine Street, all at no cost to any of the residents there. And as we were talking, actually Bethany, our admin officer, met a few of your council members at a local event, and we found out that this was already a talking point and on the radar as an area that you guys want to revitalize. So that was another reason why we're here. We want to make sure that it matches that vision. Thus far, we have third 230-yard dumpsters that were causing a lot of pests and obviously blight. It did become, as it sat vacant unfortunately, a dumpster for, I don't know, individuals. This is a view of Fourth and Pine. This is where we would like the Carter, the Rural Rally to kind of everybody to filter into. Again, we're going to have a lot of volunteers, and we will have a big kickoff event. We're going to have closing ceremonies. We want this to be big. We want this to be fun. And as I go through, I'm just going to show you some pictures of the street to highlight a couple of things, and they're out of order, so I'm going to say it now. When we are talking to the residents to build a scope for what we're going to be doing, the biggest need, and it's not an ask of Habitat, I'm just advocating for the people we spoke with, is they want their road paved, and they need proper drainage. So it's half unkempt trees and then also improper gutters, but they're flooding during the winter, and this street is a speedway for people trying to avoid bridge street traffic in the morning. And in addition to that, those trees are widowmakers. You'll see as I go through the pictures that a lot of the houses have no gutters because tree branches fell and broke them, or, and big branches on the rooftops, as well as there have been a few people that have actually gotten hurt from the trees falling on them. But it also really highlights, this isn't going to be that difficult. You can see some of these houses just need to be cleaned up. Some people are elderly, and they can't actually remove the debris. We have Salav on board to come through and help get rid of just a lot of garbage, and we're building all the rest of our partnerships as we speak. And, but, like this, just a little yard work, a little fresh paint. Not in this presentation, but I do just want to bring this to your attention. This home, we won't be able to touch. I did send a letter to the owner on record, and I haven't heard back. We can't touch a property that we don't have permission to. So if anybody has any resources to help me find that person and see, because I don't want to leave one sore thumb on a really beautiful street, and that is literally the first thing you see. Yeah. That is 914 Fourth Street? 915 Fourth Street? I have it redone. And then this, I mean, these are cute, as Stuart calls them, they're like little bungalows, but this, this is kind of what we're hoping all of these homes are going to look like when we're done. Yes.
No, that's my recollection. I remember campaigning 2020 and walking that street, and it was extremes.
Yeah.
Places like that, and then places not like that.
Correct.
But it's a charming, it's a charming little block.
Super, super cute. Very cute little neighborhood. And this is, this is actually a, I want to let you know that this is a watercoloring that is quite huge, and it doesn't translate to this photo as well, but Councilmember Gilchrist put this together. He is putting together other visuals of what he thinks the final project will be like, but he put that together in a blink of an eye for me, and also let me know that the historic name for Pine Street is Kelly Court. And Kelly Court. And his vision is cobblestone. He wants the road to be done in cobblestone that'll eliminate having to get speed bumps and look better and be less upkeep. He can talk to you about that offline, because that's his idea, but again, that's not something we can do.
We'll talk to the finance person about that.
But there are a lot of those things that are, that, you know, when you go into next year's budget, like I said, we can't do it, but this can be the jumpstart to help save some costs and really jumpstart that, that vision for Marysville. This is our first volunteer engagement since COVID. It's also our first fundraiser since COVID. Like you said, you thought it was new. We have been busy, head down, doing a lot of things, but we really want to remind the community that we are supporting low-income homeowners with repairs, and we are putting low-income families into homeownership. So the, we want to, yeah, we want to raise up property values. We want to raise up community morale. We want the safe, the safe-to-feel streeter, or the street to feel safer, however you want to word that. And also, this, like I said, the media presence to highlight government and leadership at both Yuba County and the city of Marysville. And for me, and for a lot of us, it's also to just reignite that traditional Habitat model. This project is going to cost about $200,000. Of course, that's if we had no in-kind. We have paint, right? If you go into our restart, you'll see that we have a lot of paint. But we are going to be asking volunteers to raise $500. We'll create a fundraising portal for them to reach out to their network. That's to ensure that this event covers its costs, but my goal is that we weigh more than cover the costs of this event. One of the biggest needs that we need, and in the city of Marysville, extra especially actually, is an immediate home repair need. To be able to serve people that are coming to the window that need a home repair, because currently our home repair program, all of our programs are grant-funded, which means we have to adhere to the federal compliances that are attached to them. And our home repair is currently Cal Home in CDVG. We operate that in multiple jurisdictions, but it is a very lengthy application process. It is very compliant-heavy, and we can't approve everybody based on federal regulations, but we could based on a Habitat model. So when an elderly person needs a ramp because they can no longer get up their stairs into their home, or an ADA-accessible bathroom, or someone's AC goes out in the middle of a heat wave, and they've got three kids and no money, we can do an internal 0% Habitat loan and make those payments affordable based off of their income. Those payments go back into the repair fund, and we're able to serve another neighbor within the community. And I know it was really hard to administer that funding here in Marysville because so many people had unpermitted add-ons, which, you know, blow the federal compliance right out of the water for those applications. What am I doing? Oh, okay. So, and we're again transforming a house into a home, so we're going to do an open application right after the event, the 1st through the 15th of November, and we'll be announcing a homeowner by December 1st. So there's going to be another big fun event I'll talk to you guys about later, which will be a ribbon cutting or key ceremony. Our focus, this is, the home is 1,021 square feet, and it's a two-bedroom, one-bath. So we, a family will outgrow that really quickly. So the focus will not be for family with young children. It'd be a retired veteran, maybe a low-income, someone that qualifies low-income, that is more entry-level position at the hospital, or someone that has lived experience, that has worked to rebuild their life and has a proven track record of maintaining affordable rental housing, but with the market the way it is right now, they cannot afford affordable homeownership unless it is done affordably. And because we are the lender, we can make it very, very affordable. This is what, well, actually, there's less walls now. This was taken a week ago, and I'm coming to you on short notice because this just came back into our housing stock. I would have loved to given you a lot more notice. We thought that an investor would buy it. So yes, two-bedroom, two-bath. And again, I just want to say why it matters beyond Pine Street, even if we don't get the Rural Rally. This is really our opportunity to prove that we can, and that importance of bringing in national attention to the Ubassutter area, the tax revenue, the business sales, all of the things that come with an event like that. But we really want to improve Pine Street aesthetics and resident morale, and, and just really have a successful event and start getting volunteers back on the build site and reminding people that, you know, our mission is to end homelessness, but to provide safe and affordable homeownership and housing to, in a sustainable, in a fiscally responsible manner. So we want it to make sense for everybody. Before the mayor got rid of my crowd, I'm just joking. If you are interested, you can go to ubassutterhabitat.org, go to Rural Rally. We have links there to sign up to be a volunteer, to be a donor, a skilled volunteer. But we are also going to be getting, putting together a family selection committee, because we won't choose the homeowner. We just put together viable applications. We'll have a committee that selects that. And a big need is if anybody wants to be a part of the planning committee for this event, there's a lot to do in very little time, so if you'd like to add your voice, your thoughts, your opinions, please reach out to me directly. I would love to have your support, and anybody in here, go to work, talk to your team, and build a team, get some volunteers out there. We would love to see you. And I just want to close with saying that, again, we're not asking for funding. We are asking for political will. As we move forward and planning happens, we would need help with road closures, permits, and potentially utilizing Cal Works during the workday with the tree trimming to help offset some costs. But, but ultimately, we want this to be a strong partnership and really build our partnership with the city of Marysville. I really thank you for your time.
Take a read. Any questions or comments?
I have one question.
Yeah.
The low-income affordability, how much does the low-income person have to make to qualify to buy this house?
Well, it depends on the family size. So for a single person, they can't make less than $20,300.
Okay, what's, and what is the average income in Marysville?
So here's the thing, for a family size of four, they can make up to $74,000. And I can tell you from the applicants, and for, that is a lot of families' goal income, $74,000. That's considered low income. When I first started at Habitat, a family size of four couldn't exceed $46,000, $50,000. So cost of living has gone up, so, so has what's considered low income.
So it sounds to me like a lot of people who live here will be able to qualify for this. Perfect. Thank you.
I mean, not much, that's an exaggeration, but yes, there's no shortage of people that will qualify.
Sir? So Kami, I'd say thank you, for you and Habitat for Humanity, for picking a block in Marysville that has always had high potential.
Yeah.
And it's in a perfect location down there, close to the hospital. I've been in many of those houses, and I just, I think this idea, this project's an awesome one. And I've not been involved in it as much as Councilman Gilchrist, by any way, shape, or form, or Margie over here. Thank you very much for your guys' work on that, but thank you for you and Aptat for facilitating this. It's, it's only going to get better if we could just do one block at a time, so. Thank you very much for your work on that.
Thank you. I hope to see you with a paint roller and a hammer. And, and I don't know that I mentioned this, and I apologize, but the kickoff ceremony that's not on the slide, it will be the 26th at noon, October 26th. I'll send out a lot of details. This is, like I said, we're getting everything together, but we would love to have leadership from Marysville speaking and be at the closing ceremonies.
What, Margie or?
I just want to say thank you for bringing it to our attention. We spoke, not you, but...
Bethany?
Bethany, at the Salav dinners.
Yes.
411 about it, so we're excited.
I was very excited to hear it was already, you two were already talking about it, so I was like, this is exciting, because now it's, you know, being able to meet the need of a community and the need of the city makes it all the better, so.
Thank you.
Yes. And I have flyers for anybody with the QR code.
And so you're raising money in $500 buckets?
So we are, yes, well, for the volunteers, the volunteers were asking to raise $500.
I'll fill up one of the buckets. I'll come, great.
Thank you.
You bet. So you raised some money today?
Yes.
Awesome.
And I do have grants out with Wells Fargo and some other community members, so we are, yes. Any other questions?
Good deal. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it. Thank you again for giving.
Excellent. Okay, we now move to, do we have any public comment on the consent calendar or on any matter not on the agenda, Madam Clerk?
Ricky, you wanted to speak on an agenda item, correct? Okay, so we don't have any public comment until the public hearing portion.
Okay, then we'll go to the consent calendar. What's the will of the council? Move to approve? Move to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Done. Consent calendar is passed. We move to the public hearing calendar. All matters in this section of the agenda, actually, I'm supposed to do this. Public hearing is now open. All matters in this section of the agenda are formal public hearings that will be acted on individually. There's just one item. When called on for public comment, members of the public may request to speak prior to action on each, on this item. When you're called, you may approach the podium. Ricky knows how to do that. And the matter for us, and we'll have the presentation that opened to public comment, is item number four on the agenda, General Plan 2050 Downtown Specific Plan, Zoning Code Update, Historic Design Guidelines, and Final Environmental Impact Report Regarding Public Housing. And the recommendation is lengthy. Bear with me, please. Pass a motion to, one, adopt a resolution certifying the environmental impact report for the General Plan 2050 update, the Town Downtown Specific Plan, and the zoning code update, including adopting the findings of fact, adopting a mitigation monitoring and reporting plan, rejecting land use alternatives, and adopting a statement of overriding considerations for the project. We're just getting going here. Two, adopt a resolution approving the City of Marysville General Plan 2050. Three, adopt a resolution adopting the Historic Design Guidelines. And four, introduce for first reading ordinance number 1462, amending Title 17 of the City of Marysville Municipal Code by amending the zoning map to change the zoning district designations consistent with the downtown specific plan and consistent with state law. Amend the zoning map, y'all following this? And adopting a new zoning district of public slash quasi-public, waive the first reading and schedule the proposed ordinance for a second reading adoption at the next regular city council meeting currently scheduled for October 7th, 2025, to be effective 30 days after adoption. And finally, five, introduce the first reading of ordinance 1463 to adopt... And finally, five, introduce the first reading of ordinance 1463 to adopt the downtown specific plan, waive the first reading and schedule the proposed ordinances for a second reading and adoption at the next regular city council meeting currently scheduled for October 7th, 2025, to be effective 30 days after adoption. Kathy, I should have let you read that. But it was my job. Ms. Kathy Pease, you are a genius at this sort of thing, please tell us what's going on.
Yes, good evening, I'm Kathy Pease, a planning consultant that assists the city of Marysville. As the council knows, this is kind of deja vu, we did consider this back in March, and due to a requirement to post a summary of the ordinances after the approval, we have to say who voted and what the outcome was, that needs to be in the paper. We, to be ultra-conservative, are bringing the entire package back to you this evening. So in July, I brought this to the Planning Commission, again, for their recommendation. So this item tonight, we'll, I'll go briefly over the project components. There is a benefit in bringing this back, we've been able to do a little bit of cleanup items that I'll talk about. And then, again, we did an environmental document that you guys have already seen, so tonight we'll go over that, accept public testimony, and then you'll consider the item. So like I said, this did allow us to do some minor updates. We are expanding a small portion of the downtown specific plan to extend the boundary in working with staff. There's some projects that were legal non-conforming that were residential. This will allow us to do a minor amendment to bring those in, and that'll streamline development in the future. And we are clarifying allowable uses. If the council remembers when we came before you in, in March, one of the questions was about legal non-conforming, particularly in the medical arts district, so if there were automotive uses, that's not a use that's proposed in the future, but those uses can continue, and we wanted to clarify that that is the case. So again, there are some minor edits that we've done. Expanding the boundary, we needed to update all the exhibits in the general plan and the downtown plan to match the new specific plan boundary. And then, again, it particularly allows mixed use and high-density residential in that area. Uh-oh. So again, here are the various tables that we updated. And here's an exhibit on the right-hand side, you can see to the right, down in the lower right-hand corner, there's an area outlined in yellow, that's the area that we brought into the downtown specific plan. And here's a close-up of those properties that were brought in on an aerial. So again, as a reminder, the big portion of the project was updating our general plan to 2050. This provides a vision for the future. We updated the general plan land use designations. We are proposing to adopt historic design guidelines to update those. And then we did a zoning code update, again, to be consistent with recent state laws. We did an environmental impact report that went out for public review for 45 days, and then we responded to comments and prepared a final environmental impact report. We prepared what's called a mitigation monitoring and reporting program. We took all of the mitigation that was identified in the EIR, and we put it in one table, and we've outlined when projects come forward, what the responsibility of the city as the lead agency is, and what the future applicants would need to do to make sure the impacts are reduced. So again, the final EIR included responses to comments and minor text changes to the EIR. We are doing a statement of overriding considerations, that's a thing that the council approves that explains why the benefits of the project outweigh unavoidable significant impacts. So again, we are recommending that the council approve the resolutions and the first reading of the ordinance, ordinances, to approve the, certify the final EIR, adopt the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, adopt the California Environmental Quality Act findings and statement of overriding considerations, adopt the general plan amendment, the downtown specific plan, historic design guidelines, and the zoning code update. And that concludes my presentation.
If I may. May I? I'm looking at page two of five, very beginning, and I can see Yuba Park there, and it looks like it's still zoned park and open space. That wasn't my understanding how we're gonna end up.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
That was, it was my understanding that was not gonna be where we ended up with that, with that piece of property.
With, oh.
Yuba Park.
With park?
Yuba Park.
Oh.
At Yuba and 10th Street.
So it's still shown as park? I don't know. Sorry. Yeah, this is Matthew Girkens.
Thank you, Kathy.
I remember having conversations about this, and that was gonna be changed to commercial or mixed use.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Matthew Girkens from AECOM, I was the primary author of the general plan and specific plan. The way I remember the history of it is that we did, in fact, look at different development concepts for Yuba Park, and you'll see that, and especially in appendix of the specific plan, there are vignettes looking at feasible redevelopment, including multifamily development that preserves a little bit of open space, but would develop that park. There did not seem to be consensus to change the land use designation to prohibit park uses and only allow mixed-use urban development of that park. So what we did instead was include, document this in a policy in the general plan that, I'm paraphrasing, says something like, the city should look at population existing and future population and parkland and examine feasible potential for redevelopment of existing parkland. And we had Yuba Park in mind in particular, although there were some other parks that we were thinking about early on in the process as well. But we didn't perceive consensus to whole-scale make that, make that change right now. That's the way I remember it.
That's not my memory.
So the environmental impact report and the specific plan facilitate that being redeveloped if a project comes forward in the future?
No, it's just, it's just a lot more work downstream in case we want to do something. It'd be nice to have the flexibility.
Well, this does set you up for flexibility. If somebody comes in, they can rely on the EIR to cover it from an environmental standpoint.
May I?
I'm, I'm not ready to approve this with, with this like this, because I thought there's a pretty clear discussion on making that property available for commercial and mixed use immediately. There's no, there's no plans to do anything immediately, and there's a lot of, there's some interest in the property, historical value, and that can be accommodated with a development, but.
This.
You guys didn't get the message.
Well, this streamlines it, it's covered in the environmental document, we show the parameters of.
I know you did that, but, but apparently you weren't listening, because I thought it was made pretty clear. I'm, I'm sorry, I just, I just saw this and I presumed that had been followed through on.
To the chair.
Sir.
I completely understand your thought process and how you feel. What, so just so you know, everything in the general plan update is a living document and can be changed.
I understand.
When we come, when it comes time to, to do that, and the other park was Washington Square. And so we did studies through AECOM, through AECOM, to show what positive impact those two parks would have, so that we can balance out whether we do it or not with the public's input at a later date, when we're ready to, to achieve that. Is that not correct?
Yes, so if a project came in to redevelop it, it would go before the city council, we would request a zoning change, but they wouldn't have to do a new environmental review because it's covered.
Environmental impact report has been covered.
We had a lot going on with this general plan update.
Mm-hmm.
And again, every conversation I was involved in, it was very clear that that piece of property was gonna be available immediately for mixed, commercial, and now it isn't.
I wasn't, I'm sorry.
And there's a whole lot going on, and look at all these pages, it's not like I should have picked up on it earlier, but now I look at it and I'm surprised.
Through the chair.
Sir.
Kathy and Councilman Gilchrist, I, I get it, and Mayor, respectfully, I, I understand your position on that. The conversations had been made about being able to quickly make changes to that park should we have a development plan in place, but we do not. I do believe that the general plan specifically does allow us the avenues in the future to be able to develop or realign any of our mixed use or whatever the case may be with any of our current ordinances that are there, and that's what this general plan 2050 would allow us to do. Is it a little bit of extra steps should a developer come in there? If a developer comes in there and wants to develop that piece of land, it's gonna be probably a bunch of steps that developers are gonna have to do in general, just to be able to make anything happen there, but it also still leaves the fact that we're wanting some open space in that area.
I, I, thank you, Brad. I know it can be done later, but when something I thought was made very clear is not there, I wonder what else is in here that's inconsistent with specific desires? And again, this is a very complicated thing, it's, it's like, okay, now I've gotta go back and read this whole thing to see what else is amiss? So that's the problem.
So, sorry to interrupt, Mr. Mayor, may I, for a moment? So the, wasn't Yuba Park specifically cited in the plan?
Yes, it's a catalyst site, we, AECOM showed what could happen if it redeveloped. So the, the purpose of a catalyst site, we've got several that they looked at, is to show what development looks like. So it's covered in the specific plan, potential units, potential commercial is covered in the specific plan, so it's analyzed. So if it comes in, it's extremely streamlined, it still will need to go before the council, we would rezone and have design.
It could have been done now.
Go ahead, sure.
Yes, that could be the will of the council. I just wanted to also mention, oh, thank you. I also just wanted to mention that because the property is in park use and owned by the city, there's a state law called Surplus Lands Act, and there would be, there's, there's a certain process for making that available for private development. It has to be basically bid, put out there for interest by affordable housing developers, or proposed for a different open space use. There are constraints that are, what I'm saying is, there are constraints in state law that are under the Surplus Lands Act that are, you know, much more labor-intensive compared to a zoning change or a general plan amendment for the city to make. So there's that consideration as well, I just wanted to put that out there.
I didn't understand any of that.
State law says you can't just develop a city park, you can't just sell up for private development, there has to be a process to first look at affordable housing or other open space use.
And?
So, so why, why does that get in the way of doing the zoning now?
I, I don't know the relationship between Surplus Lands Act and making a unilateral zone change, I would have to, if that had been the process, we would have rendered a legal, or generated a legal opinion on a zone change in relation to the new Surplus Lands Act.
So, if I may, Matthew, Mayor?
To make this easier for everybody, hopefully.
Kathy, can I ask a question on that real quick, please?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. So, Matthew, what you're saying is because the, California has a state law, the, the Surplus Lands Act, you wrote this in accordance to that law in place right now. We can't necessarily make a decision about zone changing, because according to that law, we have to go through the process of whether it's gonna be affordable housing first and go down a list and so forth. So, being that the case, it seems as though you've written this according to that Surplus Lands Act law. Is that what I understand?
In a way, but what I'm really saying is, had that been the, the proposal to change the zone to only allow commercial or mixed-use development, then I would have vetted it through Surplus Lands.
Right, so you left it a little more ambiguous for the possibility of, of options and so forth, as I see fit, thank you.
I think you all would have been better served by flagging this earlier, because it was, again, there was clear discussion about this.
I, I'm sorry, because I never was given the direction to rezone it. We, we came and showed you the general plan, we showed you the catalyst sites that we were talking about, but to make this, your decision maybe easier tonight, we are planning the next step. We still have money in the proposal to do a zoning code update, like the minor changes we've done for this. You guys consider and adopt the general plan tonight, we can turn around and use some of those remaining funds to look at rezoning this park or other parks that you guys are concerned with.
Put that on your list, please.
If that had been changed to whatever, one, it would disallow any of it to be used for a park area?
No, no. We could look at a zoning that, well, if the zoning changed and it's a park currently, that would be a non-conforming use, and the park uses could continue in the future. The, we will have to be careful with what it is zoned, rezoned to, because it will have to allow affordable housing, because it's city, yeah.
Okay, so the other thing, though, if it's rezoned, then a typical project that meets that zoning would not have to come before the council, right? It only has to come before the council if we do it in the process that you set it up for.
My thought is it still would come before the council for design review, whatever's proposed, I'm assuming that you'd want to take a look at.
Right, for design review, but.
Yeah.
What I'm concerned is because I, I thought we were changing it too, but now I'm kinda getting convinced that we shouldn't. If it was, let's just use that it was going to a commercial, and somebody comes in with a commercial project, it already meets the zoning, so the only thing then that we would have control of would be the design review, correct?
Correct, yeah.
If we leave it this way and a project comes in, we can then decide that we don't want that project, and we wouldn't then change the, the zoning, right? So we have, the point being is, we have a lot more control over it if we leave it this way.
Correct.
If we change it to a commercial or a multi-housing, then it automatically, somebody can walk in and put that in there with just the design review.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, that answered my, that answered my question.
This is a complicated issue with lots of variables. You also will need to keep in mind, we own the property. We also have the right to do something such as a DDA, a development agreement, that would limit what people can do with the property based on a contractual agreement, is that correct, council?
After you offered to do the affordable housing.
We would have to do, go through the Surplus Land Act, which I think is a huge consideration to make, because that, that is statutory and it provides preference to those entities, including affordable land act use. Doesn't mean we have to approve those projects either, because we would enter into negotiations with them, and we may say we're not interested, but there, there are a lot of. But there, there are a lot of reviews and decisions that will need to be made. It will end up coming through the planning commission and council if we own the property.
Pardon me, Jim, do you recall the acreage that the trigger for?
Five acres, so, and I'm not sure where that is. It's pretty close.
I think we could shave off a little bit of a piece of that and we wouldn't be within that.
I do, and I understand your concern, Mayor. We had identified multiple, what were the sites called?
Catalysts.
Catalyst sites. Catalyst sites. And many of them were parks or green space. And I'm suspecting that we said, okay, let's just get the environmental done because that is really the big hurdle, the environmental review, and then we can make the zoning changes as the properties, as we decide what we're going to do with the properties. We can do the rezoning. For some reason, I thought there was an overlay that allowed us to do that, but it was just a catalyst site is what you're calling it.
And we added the units and the, to the specific plan.
So I would suggest we have the property surveyed to know the exact dimensions. And because I remember we went through the Surplus Land Act thing with the B Street property, we were wondering if we were going to be caught within the scope of.
It was five acres, I'm positive of that.
It was just under five acres.
That's the threshold, yeah.
So let's, let's, let's survey the property, find out the exact dimensions. If it's over five acres, let's sell enough to get it under.
Might I recommend we do that for all of those catalyst sites because there were some others we were looking at?
Absolutely, absolutely. Because we do own the property, so someone just can't come in and do what they want because we own it. We are, we are the captains of the, of the destiny here. Mr. Michael.
My thought then is, as long as we have control over what's going to go there, why wouldn't we leave it as the park and then zone it to whatever project comes in that we, that we desire?
It, I presume, Dan, you're a real estate guy, I presume it would change the risk profile on someone wanting to approach it for a, for a development plan because the risk of changing the zoning would be between them and success. Whereas if we get that done, we've got a piece of property zoned, ready to go, we own it, we're in control of what happens to it.
But?
And that, that's a big risk.
I know, but what if we zone it to something and somebody comes in with a project and then we're changing the zoning again?
I think it's mixed commercial, I think, doesn't that cover just about everything?
I know, but what if somebody comes in with something that isn't?
Well, we're not going to build a temple there.
Well, it, it wouldn't allow, I don't think the mixed usage allows for residential.
To answer your question, Mr. Mayor, right now this allows the flexibility, the way that they set it up. They're going to display a concept that's in the general plan right now from where you're, and this is what was considered for the site, and it's actually 4.2 acres, Mayor.
So it's not, we're not at risk for the excess land?
Yeah, so this is what the consideration was for the site. And this is, of course, is just a proposal and we'd have to, we'd have to solicit a developer or somebody who'd be interested. But with the, with what Kathy was mentioning about the EIR, the way it is, that would allow the flexibility for them to come in and then it's a much quicker or it's faster process in getting it done.
That's huge to developers.
You're saying it's quicker if they don't have it already zoned?
No, it's just not quicker than the zoning, but again, there's a flexibility of zoning, so it could be a different use. I don't know, it's not, maybe not a temple, but something else. And it could be something else that comes in and then.
So manufacturing is different from commercial, commercial mixed use?
Yes, yeah, manufacturing is like a manufacturer's.
That probably would, probably.
I think residential's multi-unit is different as well.
Yes, yeah. It allows the flexibility of determining what can be put on the site once a developer comes and is interested in the potential site. These, these examples here, if you want to show the, can you show the site plan? This is just a proposed site plan that AECOM put together for the site, which maintains some of the green space in the center of multifamily apartments, and these are.
And we'd certainly, with some of that property, we'd want to dedicate it to the historical aspect. As I understand it, that is the location, a corner of the property was where the Emancipation Proclamation was first read in Marysville sometime like a couple of years after, so it would have been after Lincoln's death. It would have been '67, I think, somewhere in there. But it happened there and consideration of that would have to be taken and certainly a portion of the property should be dedicated to remembering that.
And I think that's certainly something we can do when we begin, once.
But I think, but all the conversations we had, I remember, I've seen this, pardon me, Jim, I've seen this, were about commercial mixed use as the most likely highest value of the property. And again, I'm just disappointed that it's still he for park. Okay.
Might I make a recommendation? And this is, I may need legal counsel's help on this because we're in our first reading. We could bring changes back at the second reading, is that correct?
Not to your ordinance.
We, we would have to start over.
Yeah, that is not a second reading.
You would reintroduce, you would reintroduce. If you want to make an amendment now, but we'd have to parse out the language and all of that, so, as a practical matter, if you want to make a change, it's going to come back for reintroduction.
Okay, and we can work through those details, but the other, my thought is, can we bring this back with some options for those opportunity sites? Do we zone them differently now or later? Do, what are the implications? Do we, do, you know, how can we handle this issue where we might have different zoning depend, needs depending on the developer? Would that be something we could do?
My recommendation is to parse that out from tonight's, to give staff direction to come back to the council. We could do a workshop to discuss options on the different catalyst sites and then bring, you know, do the whole hearing notice and everything to consider rezoning those parcels.
I'm happy with, as long as we have momentum in the direction of opening our eyes and opening up this opportunity, again, with consideration of historical value and care and doing something about that. And that should be included in any planning we do. So I'm glad we got momentum on opening up the property and making, and taking, minimizing, mitigating to the extent possible risk to a potential developer. Because if they know it's already zoned right, that changes their risk calculations dramatically.
I will know from experience in other jurisdictions, when you cover it in an environmental document in your general plan like we've done, that is a huge catalyst for developers. So while the site would need to be rezoned, the fact that we have an environmental document again, and we have included those units in that analysis, that extremely streamlines the process for that entitlement. So they don't have to do an environmental impact report, it doesn't have to go out for public comment for 45 days. We have an environmental document that they can reuse for their project. And so that saves money, that saves time. The entitlement to do a rezoning, since it's already teed up, will be relatively quick. Instead of looking at a six to eight to a year process, we're talking a couple of months.
We're not going to solve this right now.
To the chair, hold on, I've been asking. I don't care what we, everybody wants to go through and go through that process, but my suggestion, which is what I'm going to support, is that we leave it as the green space because it's going to give us a lot more flexibility for a developer that wants to come in. So I'm, I'm pretty strong on the fact that we need to leave that. All the work has been done to change the zoning, especially the, the environmental report, so it would, it would just give us a lot more flexibility of who can walk in the door and talk to Dan on that. So I would suggest that we leave it as is.
But, to be argumentative, but I think whatever the zoning is, they'd have that same flexibility. If it was commercial mixed use and someone wanted to do manufacturing there, the same flexibility would be there. And you've, you've actually broken out of the park category, so I think they'd have the same flexibility, but I don't want to, we don't have to beat that to death right now.
Through the chair.
Forgive me, go ahead, and then I'll close.
May I mention we go to a public comment before we go too deep?
Yeah, I'm not done. Please. So, Kathy, stick around. So, between now and our next meeting when we talk about this, I want some conversation with city officials about this and consider the flexibility. And my suggestion is a change now, even if it's commercial mixed use, which has been the best judgment of the people looking at this, witness the presentation you just shared, that kind of change is the most likely. So why not tee that, why not give some thought to how we tee that up, whether it's now and the next time or not? It's, I want momentum in that direction. And again, with consideration of the historical impact and the cultural impact of that, of the Emancipation Proclamation.
So, I do want to point out, if I were to bring this back at the next meeting when we're, we're going to consider the second reading of the ordinances, we would have to start over with the public noticing. So we wouldn't be adopting the general plan, we'd be deferring everything.
They'll give us some time to think about it.
Well, I, I was just conferring with our legal counsel. Could we just not bring the zoning ordinance or vote on the zoning ordinance tonight and approve the general plan and the other documents?
Well, we wouldn't be able to adopt the downtown specific plan either because they went part and parcel in adopting or approving the downtown specific plan. We needed to amend the zoning ordinance because that changed the zoning for the downtown area. So again, from my perspective, it's just cleaner to go ahead with tonight and direct staff to come back with the rezoning of those other parcels so we can do it right, so we can analyze it, make sure we notice appropriately, and take everybody's.
Maybe it takes two more readings.
And how many, how many times can we go back and re, update the general plan after?
So the general plan can only be updated four times a year. There is no limit on how many times we can bring the zoning ordinance changes.
Thank you. Do we have any, Ricky, did you want to chat?
Yes.
Mayor Sam Ayor, he knows his way around this place.
To me, this is a really special day because as a resident, as a mayor, Chris Stewart knows, and this is like a baby being born, and so I'm looking forward to this happening. It's been a long time since 1985, as we know, and this is a great day, so for Marysville. Here, I'm speaking on behalf of Blue Zones Yuba Sutter. We're, we're pleased to express our strong support of this comprehensive planning documents before you today, particular the provisions that advance missing middle housing and create walkable, health-promoting built environments in our community. Blue Zones Project Yuba Sutter has been proud to support Marysville planning efforts over the past several years, as you know. Our organization played a crucial role in helping the city secure significant grant funding, including supporting Marysville's successful $3.5 million application to Seco Regional Maintenance and Modernization Grant for 22nd Street. Good Avenue? Street, street, thank you. This collaboration exemplifies how public-private partnership can enhance community well-being through strategic improvements to built environment. We have also actively participated in the Plask Planning Initiatives, including supporting the Bicycle Implementation Plan that connects a set of views to Yuba College across four jurisdictions, and collaborating with the Urban Land Institute on a redevelopment analysis that you guys have been talking about that included the identifying Washington Square as a potential location for missing middle housing. These efforts reflect our commitment to creating environments where healthy choices become easy choices. As we look to our community's future housing needs, we must especially consider the needs of our aging population, including myself. I'm thinking as Alex grows up and goes to school and Jennifer and I are by ourselves, we're going to need a smaller space. I would love to live in downtown. Chris, I'm looking at some of your spots. Research from Blue Zones areas worldwide demonstrates that older adults thrive in walkable environments with an access to entertainment, amenities, and health services within walking distance. Missing middle housing include duplexes, fourplexes, courtyard apartments, and live-work units. Provides precisely the type of housing that supports aging in place while maintaining independence. These housing types create ideal density to support local businesses while fostering the natural movement and social connections that are hallmark of Blue Zones communities. When older adults can walk through healthcare facilities, restaurant, entertainment, venues, and community gatherings, they maintain the physical activity and social engagement that promotes longevity and well-being. The Downtown Specific Plan emphasizes on building, on built environment that supports natural movement, aligns perfectly with Blue Zones Project principles. Research has consistently shown that walkable neighborhoods with mixed use development encourages daily physical activity, resulting in longer and healthier lives. Your plans focus on creating pedestrian and bicycle-friendly streetscape, enhance lighting, shade trees, gathering spaces directly supports the Blue Zones principle of move naturally, making physical activity a part of daily life rather than a conscious effort. We know that Marysville has amazing assets, and it's an ideal location for private investment in the missing middle housing and community-oriented development. Ellis Lake, our historic downtown core, Chinatown, the medical facilities, the levee trails, they create a unique combination of natural beauty, cultural richness, richness, and recreational opportunities that attract both residents and businesses. Appropriate to Ventas Health and Ride Out Regional Medical Center, one of Marysville's largest employers, could provide housing development that creates perfect opportunities for medical professionals and supports staff to live within a walking distance of their workplace. This reduces traffic, supports local businesses, and makes a type of vibrant mixed-use community that characterizes the world of Blue Zones. The plan emphasizes on connecting past work, such as the bike and pedestrian master plan, the bounce-back initiative that I was very happy to work on, demonstrates the comprehensive thinking necessary for creative, truly livable communities. These infrastructure improvements don't just move people, they make the daily opportunities for social interaction and physical activity that builds community resilience and individual well-being. By making it easier for the private investment to flow into our community, these planning documents create the regulatory certainty and clear vision that developers need to develop the missing middle housing in our community requests. The identification of sites like Washington Square and areas around Yuba Park for potential housing development represents precisely the type of infill development that creates vibrant places. When we build housing near parks, medical facilities, downtown amenities, we create opportunities for different generations to interact naturally, another key characteristic of the Blue Zones communities. These developers' developments can serve as catalysts for broader community improvements, supporting existing businesses while attracting new services that serve both longtime residents and newcomers. Blue Zones Projects Yuba Sutter is committed to continue our support of these plans to move into implementation. We believe Marysville has the potential to become a model Blue Zones community, a place where the built environment naturally supports healthy aging, community connections, and economic vitality. The comprehensive approach embodies in these plans, planning documents address land use, transportation, housing, historic preservation, economic development, all simultaneously. It creates a foundation for a community where residents can thrive throughout their lives. We ask you to please approve these planning documents and look forward to working with the city to implement the vision outlined within them. Together, we can build a great location and places to support. to support health, well-being, and prosperity for all Marysville residents. Thank you for your leadership in creating a healthier and more vibrant Marysville. Thank you for your time.
Ricky, Ricky, out of respect, you did not get the three-minute hook.
Oh, thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you very much. Let's see. To the chair.
So we have a reading. Is there any other public comment, or is it be done there?
That's all.
So with respect, Mayor, we have a recommendation of a motion before us. I don't necessarily agree with your disposition on it, with total respect. I understand where you're kind of going, but I appreciate the way it's been written. And the fact is, it's written with flexibility. And so for that flexibility right there, at least allows us to have... Bring this back before the council four more times inside of a year for discussion of potential changes. With that being said, there's a recommendation for a motion. Therefore, I put a motion to the floor to accept this as it's written. If we don't get a second, send it on the floor. I put it on the floor.
I would entertain a motion passed tonight, and only if we can direct staff to bring a rezoning agenda item back regarding the catalyst sites by a date certain that it needn't be the next meeting. It would be something that the city manager could work out with the planning staff.
Is that possible?
Is that possible? We'd have a report back on... Bring a rezoning agenda item back regarding the catalyst sites by a date certain, and we could fix that date at some time, no later than November. I just got a thumbs up from the planning guy.
Oh, Jason.
Time for the public hearing is closed, and now we're talking about motions? Thank you, counselor. Need a lawyer around. So that would be the only change.
So there's two motions on the floors, if I got that correct. Proper decorum, do we need to close one or withdraw one? Counselor? Your microphone.
Both.
Both motions will advance this to the next meeting.
To the next meeting.
To the next meeting.
Both of them advance it. The other one just keeps momentum going on these catalysts.
Both of them will advance it to the next meeting. The other one contains a directive to bring something back for council consideration at a later date.
So the motion that I put forth would go with the process that is written. The motion the mayor put forward would push this to the next meeting with the changes.
No, 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 no.
No, 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 no. The mayor's motion also moves it forward. He just says, "In addition, I'd like to hear something else by a date certain."
So I guess it goes to the other council members, see what their thoughts were on whether we vote for one, both, or if one of us withdraws.
You will be where you want to be at the next meeting. The mayor will have something coming back to him at whatever date.
And that's by November, November. In other words, we're... I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm adding, let's keep the momentum on looking at these catalyst sites.
And just maybe...
It's not disagreeing, it's not neutering what you're proposing. It's in addition.
And I may give a slightly different interpretation of what we're trying to say. So we would move forward with approval of everything on this item. But we... Council would agree to direct staff to come back with an item for discussion and consideration on camp... by council separately, specifically on whether we should rezone the catalyst sites sooner than later. So it doesn't affect anything tonight. It just puts an additional obligation on staff. My consultants are shaking their head yes. That we need to bring something back no later than November for consideration by council as to whether we... How we handle those catalyst sites, whether we rezone them now or wait, or rezone some of them now, and they will bring back recommend... options and recommendations.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. My motion stands. I'd make a motion to accept as written, and we go forth to the next step.
And I suggest amendment that... To that, in addition to that, not contrary to that, that we direct staff, bring a rezoning agenda back regarding the catalyst sites by a date no later than the second meeting in November.
Question? I have a question. I don't know who can answer it. Timing-wise, if we follow the procedure you're speaking of, does that delay us?
No.
Once we've made... Hold on. Once we've brought that back and we've made an agreement on that, we can close all of this on that November meeting? Or is it going to have to go to public hearings? Is it going to have to go to first reading and second reading?
We are not delaying anything that we had planned tonight if we move forward with the mayor's proposal. We are approving everything and moving forward. What we're going to do at a later date is have the discussion on those catalyst sites, whether we want to rezone them sooner or later. Totally separate.
I got that, Jim. All I want to know is, when we have those discussions and we make some kind of a zoning change, at that point, have we delayed anything?
No, I think...
We haven't made any changes.
It's a separate process.
Obviously, but it's a part of this, and I just want to make sure... I'm fine with going that way as long as we're not delaying.
No, we will have the second reading on the very next council meeting for this set of items, you know, the council item. And the council will vote. So the only delay that would occur is if the vote is to not move forward. As far as delay, let's... And this may be easier through an example. In November, if we present something and we decide to change zoning, you know, for those properties, and that is approved, you know, and this is a theoretical example, that's approved, and let's say it's mixed-use commercial. A developer comes in and says, "Well, I really want residential." Then we have to go through the process of rezoning it again.
Clarification on that? So what would happen if you approve everything tonight? This becomes the base document going forward. Then we bring the catalyst sites for your consideration on the rezoning. That would necessitate an amendment to the downtown specific plan and a rezoning. So that would be new entitlements that would be amending what you're approving tonight. If it's mixed-use and someone wants to come in with residential, that would be an allowed use under residential. Mixed-use would also allow commercial. The only time it may not, if someone came in with manufacturing or industrial or something that we didn't contemplate as an allowed use in the mixed-use.
But it would be doable, it may take a little more time.
Exactly.
Okay, as long as we're not delaying the process by making a change.
We're not delaying a thing. Not delaying a thing. It's just that since this is on the agenda, there is an opportunity to add this proviso of directing staff to get together with planning staff and come back with ideas on these catalyst sites for maybe a change. But nothing's committed to it. So this lives, which is on the... This lives here, and but since it's on the agenda, we have the opportunity to get this other thing in motion to reconsider, to take a fresh look at these catalyst sites. Maybe we leave them the way they are. Maybe they change later, but okay.
To the chair, final comment on the matter. I appreciate your disposition. And Matthew Girkin and Kathy Pease, I thank you for the years of work that you guys have put into this, because we've been doing this for years. And former Mayor Samoyar, this started when you were here, eight-plus years ago. And a lot of work's been put into this, and I, for one, you know, kind of think a different approach from what is presented. It's kind of like carp for the horse, because we don't know exactly what's going to go in there. It's kind of up to any particular developer that wants to come in and do something on this land. And the way it's written now, it seems like it's a little more versatile. Be that as may, the mayor's got a different thought process, and we're going to be able to go forth with both of them. I think... I appreciate the hard work on this, and I'd like to keep this going, and I stick with what I've said. Thank you.
So what did you just say? I'm trying to understand where you are.
I said, "Thank you for the work that they put into it." I put a motion that we accept it as it reads right now. And there's nothing else.
What the hell?
Just by saying, "Thank you for all their work as well."
Well, then, I make a motion. I amend that motion. Amend the motion to add, without changing anything you just suggested. I don't know why you got a problem with this. To direct staff get together with our planning team regarding the catalyst sites for separate consideration, separate consideration at some time no later than November. You've got a problem with that.
To the chair, I appreciate the way it's written, and I think it's appropriate to accept it the way it's written tonight.
Well, God bless you. So how do we consider... How do we proceed?
Well, you get a second to one... You have two motions, they're competing. You get a second to one of them, and you vote.
Is there a second on Brad or the one I proposed, which is Brad plus a sidecar? Don't have a second on either one of them? Stuart took off.
I'll second the mayor's recommendation. It's always good to have additional information so we have a clear picture of what is... what can be done in the future.
So that's this plus the sidecar? Motion and second. So that motion and a second, and a roll call vote on that.
Councilmember Rollins?
Yes.
Councilmember Hudson?
No.
Councilmember Gilchrist is absent. Vice Mayor Buttercavoli?
Yes.
And Mayor Branscombe?
Yes.
The motion is passed with a vote of three to one.
Thank you. Okay. I can oversell it afterwards. That took a while. Thank you for your patience, everybody. Madam Clerk, do we have any correspondence?
We do not.
That's good news. Council comments? Anybody on the council have anything to share?
So I hear that the Brew Fest was a success, and I thank you for the city staff for making that work. And I'm sure there were a lot of people involved, and I'd like to hear about those events and the successes come with it. So good job on that, guys.
I just wanted to say... Sorry. I just wanted to say that the Salem event, too, was such a great event. Sometimes I think we forget how much they do for us, for the community. But it was a fun event. I hope they continue to have them. It was a great time.
Yeah, I'd like to echo that, that it was a great event. The food was good, you know, the guests were wonderful. I would like to give a shout-out to MPD, the police department. There was a concern at one of our local schools, and they messaged me and sent an email to the chief. And that was like at 8:30 a.m. By noon, he had already met with the school to try to come up with a solution. So they're still working on it. And also Jeremy was involved. So I'd like to thank them for the promise. I'm all about safety at schools. You know, we need to enhance that. We need to make sure we have clear zones and parking and so on and so forth. So thank you guys so much.
Brad?
Already did, thank you.
Oh, okay. You've heard enough from me tonight. Mr. City Manager?
Just a few items regarding projects, and I'll turn it over to Dan for events. First of all, and I was hoping, hoping Councilmember Gilchrist, we're here. Everybody's seen that City Hall is painted, and we're very appreciative on that work. But if you look at the entrance to the city from the south, our Welcome to Marysville sign was also repainted by Louis Lethridge. And at some point, I would like to recognize him at council for the work he did. The sign looks great, and though it's not as big as the building, it's special to us.
Yeah, let's get a photo of that thing up here.
Our two major paving projects are moving forward. And I get the Phase One, Two mixed up a little bit, but Phase One is nearly done, and I think they're going to be putting asphalt down on Phase Two here in the next week or so. The Aldridge Sewer Project is just wrapping up. We're just... All the work has really been done. So things are moving well, and we're getting reimbursed from the state fairly quickly on the CDVG stuff, so that's been good news. Our public works folks will be back out at the Packard Library doing some more cleaning up and trimming and just getting that in a little bit better shape. And the Night Watchman, I believe, is going to be out there by the end of the week or possibly early next week. That's great news. I did speak with our friends at Caltrans, specifically Cameron Knutson, the Benny Junction Project Manager. And we were hoping to have a couple of things on the agenda tonight related to that, but we're not quite ready. One will be real estate transactions to make that project move forward between us and Caltrans. And then the second is a sewer agreement on sewer relocations that we'll bring back. Cameron has graciously agreed to come in and give an update on where they're at with that project, as well as Ninth and B, which is a separate project but related. So we will likely see him next council meeting to give a bit of an update. The EPA grant for the brownfield cleanup at the Marysville Hotel is moving forward. We have a tight timeline. We're trying to get input from the EPA proper prior to them releasing the Notice of Funding Opportunity. Our staff has been working very heavily on that. And as related to that, we do have a public input meeting coming up to just get input, that's a requirement from the EPA, as far as the grant is concerned. That's all I have. I think Dan has some events to mention.
I do, just a couple of... A few brief ones, too.
Pardon me, Dan.
Sure.
Did we publish a calendar on the website?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Are all of these events you're about to speak to on that calendar?
Yes. You want to leave it there? It's by me.
Happy to forego that unless you want to hear them.
If they're on the website, I'd just see them pass tonight at least. Because I never write them down, they go in one ear and out the other.
Okay. I'd like to have a quick brief on them, at least, just what's going on.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to congratulate our own Anissa Luangir for being on the Oversight Committee now. She's the newest member of the Oversight. So we're looking forward to that. That's for the redevelopment properties. So congratulations, Anissa. Glad to have you on there. That's great representation. Then just for...
I'll say amen to that. She's a powerhouse.
Oh, absolutely. So just four brief announcements. Fall nights on D Street begins on the 18th at 5:00. So basically, fall nights are going to be some vendors and some music and just fun. So today's the 16th, so two more days. And then on the 20th, the Bridge for Hope Suicide Prevention Walk is on Eighth Street in Marysville at 8:00 a.m. They expect a really large turnout. This is a walk where you walk from Marysville over to the bridge, over to Yuba City. So, you know, if anybody wants to join any more, then welcome to. And then on the 20th as well, we have a big event, the Boots, Buckles, and Brews Downtown Marysville on Third and Fourth Street, between Third and Fourth Street on D. It starts at 4:00 and ends at 9:00. And this has sold... It starts at 4:00 and ends at 9:00, and this has sold over 350 tickets, pre-sold over 350 tickets for this event so far. So, hopefully you guys can join in some of these events. And then lastly, I just want to mention again, the Farm to Fork, which you've been hearing about, you have reservations, the council does, so we look forward to that evening, and that's on the 27th, and that takes place between Third and Fourth Street on D at 5:00 p.m.
I'd like to add to that, it's sold out.
And it's sold out, yeah, which is over 300 tickets, so.
Belt Buckle &amp; Brews sold 350 tickets?
Brews, Belt Buckle &amp; Brews sold over 350, and then...
What's that, a pub crawl, or what's going on?
It's a, it's a country music festival.
Oh.
Yeah.
They're going to shut down Third, or what are they going to do?
They're shutting down D Street and between Third and Fourth Street.
Got it.
Yeah.
Got it.
Can I have one more comment? I just want to thank Councilperson Rollins for the great work she's done on the Terra Madre, the downtown food event. She's been actively involved with the MBA and gone to every meeting and helped support the whole process and planning, and it's been great to have her there. Thank you.
Marge is a force of nature. Next regular meeting of the city council will be Tuesday, October 7th, 2025, and we have some other meetings. Now, it's me mentioning things, I apologize. EPA Town Hall on the 25th, did you mention that?
I did mention the date, is that the correct date?
The 25th.
25th at 5:30 p.m.
Yes.
And then we have the strategic planning, which will take place all day on October, Tuesday, October 14th. And location to be announced?
Yes.
Adjourned.
YubaSutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com.
Hi, I'm Neil Goforth of Comfort Keepers of Yuba Sutter and Nevada Counties. Caring for elders or even yourself has challenges. Comfort Keepers of Yuba Sutter and Nevada Counties can help you address today's issues and plan for tomorrow with in-home and specialized care for you or your family members. Call us at 530-749-8800. Comfort Keepers of Yuba Sutter and Nevada Counties.